Planning board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
Ed Mielsche.
And if you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on August 21st and another on September 18th. And I have two sets of minutes. I believe we've gotten through the May 15th. And Pam, we had a couple of changes, right? They were all adjusted. So do I have a motion? Let's see if we have a quorum.
No, I wasn't there.
We do not have a quorum tonight to approve the May 15th minutes. And I did not get a chance to read through the June 19th yet. So Pam, if, sorry, let's hold both of these over. We had a couple of folks out on the May meeting. All right, so we'll jump into our agenda. The first item we have on our agenda is an extension of the site plan approval for Stone Ridge Commons on Route 52 and Round Hill Road.
Good evening. Mark Day, Day Engineering, representing Stone Ridge. Nothing's changed.
Okay.
Dave, it's on the market. The only people that have approached them are fuel stations, stewards, and I believe quick checks. But since it's not allowed in a B-1A, we are not moving forward with those.
Okay. So I have your original approval, Mark, as August of 2015, with two extensions in 2016 and 2017. So this is your third extension. Typically, just to give you the heads up, if you are back next year, if you haven't pulled your building permit and started, and you are asking for a fourth extension, we would ask you to look at all of the laws that have changed since your original approval and look at town, state, et cetera, and just tell us if it would have affected your development in the event that you were refiling as a new application that time. But for right now, usually we'll let it go three years unless the board has any concern.
What are we considering?
Okay, any questions or comments? Scott or Michael, any questions or comments on the extension?
No.
No comments or questions.
Do I have a motion to extend the Stone Ridge Commons site plan for a year?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thanks, Mark. Motion here. Yep.
A little more extended next time.
Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is a renewal of the peddler's permit for Hudson Valley Gyro or Hero in Market. I'm sorry, do you say gyro or hero?
Hero, gyro.
And this is our, and Pam, I'm sorry, do we have the peddler's permit information? You have all of your insurance and everything submitted?
Yeah, I've submitted everything.
Okay. And I think you'd had a couple, just in the last year, you've had some sign compliance issues. Do we have that under control?
I believe we do.
Okay, all right. One of the things you risk is actually having the permit revoked, right?
Right.
If you have more violations like that. So we want to make sure that your signs are in compliance. Are there any questions or comments from board members? I think you have, and I'm sorry, I'm just looking, the reason I asked for this is, you are open year-round or you're still open seasonally? Because in the doghouse, it used to be open seasonally.
It's year-round.
It's year-round, okay. So you're asking for a permit to actually be in effect and in use the entire year?
Correct.
Okay.
So the, there's no water in that facility, correct?
That is not correct. It has running water.
Really?
Correct.
How is it connected?
Town sewer and water. Town water, as far as I know, something.
No town sewer.
No town sewer.
Okay, but town water, okay.
Town water, oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Didn't know that.
Does have water, all year long.
It does have what?
It does have water all year round.
Okay.
And your wastewater then goes to a septic system?
And we do have the approval from our chief of police. And Pam, we have insurance in here and everything else that's required? Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, you're approved for an additional year. Please make sure you keep your signs in performance.
Yes, ma'am, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is an amended site plan for Foster Road Professional on Route 82 in Foster Road.
I'm Vasanti Mirchandani. I'm representing the Foster Road Park, Professional Park.
Okay, do you have your plan either to put up on the screen or to share with us?
I actually gave it to Pam.
And is it, is it correct, this is the change of use for the residents that was formed?
Correct, correct. They want to change the use because they want to have a caretaker who will be, you know, responsible for opening the buildings, et cetera, since the business is a 365 day, you know, a business for medical, for medical practice. So the last time I had come here, there was some issue about the pool. I think people raised the question of, you know, if there's a caretaker, what happens with that pool? So in the last month, we've removed the pool. It's gone.
Oh, okay. Was that done with the building department?
Yes, it was done with the building. We got a permit.
Actually, I think the question was, would the pool be taken out or filled in? We knew it was not going to be swimmable anymore, but...
Yeah, so we took it out.
Took it out, okay.
And what we did with that space is eventually, there is a second floor that has not been developed at all in that complex, and it's 3,000 square feet. So the materials we used to fill the pool, in case, we're not sure yet what happens to that second floor, so in case it gets used for medical purposes and turns into an office, then this area, which is large enough to accommodate actually more than 20 spaces, parking spaces, so that's, that would be, you know, the use for that space there.
Okay, so are you proposing to do that now?
No, 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 no.
Or are you saying you're going to just leave it? I'm assuming it's either grassed over and seeded or it's...
There's no talk about it yet, but that's, eventually, that might happen.
Okay.
So we would require 20 spaces for the 3,000 square feet, but we have a little more than that.
So that would be enough parking to do more stuff with what's currently storage and...
Correct, correct. Turning the storage into medical office space.
Thank you.
And the, and I think your plan right now, just make sure you look at your plan, because I think we said very specifically on the plan, there's notes that said it can't be inhabited for medical offices, but again, so if you're coming back, it would be a small change request, you'd need to come back to the planning board to use that space, and certainly you'd have to show your parking.
That space will never be converted into office. There's a second floor in one of the existing buildings. They have two buildings. One has been fully developed upstairs and downstairs, and the other building just has developed downstairs.
Okay.
So upstairs, it's just stud walls and nothing else.
Right.
So if should they decide to make that into medical offices, then they would need additional parking. And the space here, this, where the pool was, would provide that for them.
Right, and I'm just saying, at the point where the applicant is ready to do that, we want to make sure they come back to the planning board and make sure that they present that change to us.
Definitely, definitely.
Need to be able to check the parking calculations and make sure that we understand exactly what's happening at the site.
Right, definitely. That would definitely happen.
Okay.
As I understand, the permit being granted with a caretaker, and I'm really just asking to kind of, is that would have, the lodgings would have to be used by someone who is actually an employee of the facility, correct?
Correct, correct. That's what, that's what would happen, yes.
Okay.
I think they've actually designated somebody.
So are you guys going to go to like an emergency room there or something? Is that going to be? I know you have a lot of 24-hour things.
The building is actually currently even an emergency room, and sometimes people have to come from far away to open up the doors and so on, if there is some emergency that happens. So if there's somebody on the premises, it's easier for them to walk over and open a door if, when they, they are needed.
All right, okay.
So that's what it will be.
Thank you.
And I think I understood there was some after-hours pickup of testing tests and things like that.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Are there any other changes to your plan since last we talked about it?
Nothing, absolutely nothing. We just removed the pool.
Okay.
And any, the pool house, there was a pool house there with the pumps and so on, that's all gone. Everything is complete.
Okay. So, and I believe what we need to do then is make sure that you have, if you haven't, make sure you do this, make sure your application reflects that you're requesting a special permit to allow the accessory residential use with that house. And we can schedule you for public hearing to approve, sorry, to review the special permit and consider it for approval. And at the same time we do that, we would, assuming the special permit is approved, you would also have the removal of the restriction from your current plan. So when I spoke with Michelle, and Michael, just keep me honest here, she said we can do the removal of the restriction from the current plan that prevents the accessory residential use and the special permit, public hearing at the same time. So we have a single approval that, that removes the restriction and approves the special permit if the decision is to approve the special permit.
Yes, I agree with that. It can all be done at once.
Okay, so we do that once. And the reason for that is if, for some reason, the special permit is not approved, we would want to leave that restriction in place. So that's why we want to make it concurrent, the public hearing, and that those two will be decided concurrently. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I don't see any huge barriers to it. I'm just saying we have to, we have, we want to go through the process. We don't want to remove the restriction from your current plan before the special permit has been heard and we're ready to make the decision on that. So they should happen at the same time. Does that make sense there? I mean, hopefully that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this has not been to the ARB yet, has it?
No, I don't think we have to go to the...
I believe it's required.
I don't think that's required.
Internal changes, right?
The ARB was given on the old plan, I think? Are you making any changes to the exterior of the house?
We're just going to fix it up because it's in bad shape. So we'll put some new siding and a new roof, and that's, that's what, new windows, because the windows, the bedroom egress windows are not in play, not, you know, they have to be made bigger.
I think because it's commercial and a building permit's involved, then I think it's going to be ARB review.
Okay, so let's, let's also have you go in front of the ARB so that you've had that review with the, ARB is our Architectural Review Board, had that review before we bring you in for your public hearing.
That's actually been scheduled for the first part of next month.
Okay, all right. And do they have, do they have the elevations of the changes that you're making, if you're changing over the siding or changing the color or anything like that? They've got all that information?
I, I had given it, I think I gave it to Pam.
Okay.
She has all of that, yeah.
Okay. All right, they usually just need the elevations and then any materials that you're going to use on the exterior of the building, and it's what they would ask you for. All right. So any, any other questions or comments from planning board members? Any questions or comments, Michael or Scott?
No.
The only question I have is, so as part of this application or amendment, you're not adding any parking, no bank parking, nothing?
No.
Parking is currently is adequate?
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So the plans we have currently in the office are the...
Correct.
Okay. So I think we can go ahead and schedule this for public hearing. Is August 21st too soon? You're going to have to do all your advertising and all that? We have either August 21st or September 18th.
August 21st, okay.
You've got about a week probably to get the, all the mailings out. Is that give or take? It's about 25 days in advance of the public hearing, all your, all your mailings have to go out.
Okay.
All right, so do I have a motion to, bear with me, schedule the Foster Road Professional amended site plan for a public hearing on August 21st?
So moved.
I have a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you're on for public hearing on August 21st.
Okay. Actually, can we do it in September? I just remembered I have a conflict in August. I'm not in town in August.
Okay.
So let's just do it in September.
Do, I have a, a motion to change the date of the public hearing for Foster Road, I'm sorry, that's me, to September 18th?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, September 18th.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Gasland East Fishkill Site Plan on Route Do we have your plans to put up on the marquee, too?
There was some concern about versioning here and the stuff that was shown to the, to the ARB and all that. Are we, it was, what was out on the website that we got the link to two weeks ago, Chris, that was, that is the version we're really looking at here tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
You're talking about for the AR, I didn't hear the whole conversation. Did you say ARB?
The ARB, there's, during one of the preliminary discussions, it was concerned about, did we have the right version of that? And that's all been...
Yeah, the, the last...
There were arrows missing from the ingress and egress roads, the directional roads.
The last one we forwarded included, well, this submitted to the ARB.
Okay. All right, so...
Yeah, I think the fence, right, was a different material, versus the wrought iron rail.
Right. The whole versioning issue. But we're good to go.
We just have to look at it and make sure. Yeah, just, if you don't mind, just close the side panels, so it'll, it should expand There's a little, the little, there's a little dark triangle in the gray strip there where your mouses just go up about two inches. You'll see a little black triangle, that'll close that second. There you go. Perfect. Now you can, now you can...
Hopefully we're in commercial, right?
Yeah.
People at home are watching it commercial?
Oh, do we have commercials?
I hope so.
Apologize for the delay, folks.
This is just not good TV.
Well, it's just better to have the plan up there, and this way, actually, because we are broadcasting, it lets everybody see the plan at home.
I know, I know.
Is that better?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lapine, representing the applicant, Gasland Patrol, in this evening. We're before the planning board at your June agenda, at which time the planning board declared itself lead agency or intend to be lead agency. Since that meeting, we resubmitted a revised set of site plans to request to the planning board because they want to have further dialogue as to what the DOT improvements looked like within the right-of-way at the prior meeting, the day before. That meaning we had been giving a conceptual layout from the DOT as to what they were anticipating on seeing out here. Since then, we've taken that information and incorporated it into our plan set that we submitted for your review. I'd like to give you a brief overview of what this will entail.
Okay.
We actually have, in our submittal package here, we have two sets of plans related to the DOT improvements. These are the improvements directly in front of our, our project parcel here. This incorporates along the ramp ingress and egress on both the north-south side, the DOT has asked us to increase the radius coming onto the ramp, turning both right turn into the ramp and right turn off of the ramp. We are increasing that. We are revising the white line in this particular area. We've been asked to incorporate a left turn lane into our project site. This left turn lane is approximately 100 feet long. It should be able to accommodate up to five cars in a queue to take a left turn into our site. This particular location here would allow access to our most eastern portion of the site. Cars would be able to take left turns in and right turns in at this location. Egress would be on the western portion of our site, where fold movement, both left turns and right turns would be permitted. The DOT has also asked that additional striping be incorporated into the Route 82 corridor, which I have on this plan here before you, which shows the new striping that's extending all the way back to the overpass of the Taconic State Parkway Route 82 intersection.
Okay.
Chris, if I could interupt for a second. So basically, with that striping, anybody trying to turn left would basically be turning into the, you know, pulling out into the turn lane, correct?
Somebody taking a left here would be pulling out into, the intent is for this individual to, we've shifted as far as we could go to the west on this property. Anybody here would probably have to wait for a queue to eliminate, to make sure that there's no additional cars queuing to get in to the site for a left turn.
But I mean, so DOT, and again, I'm not an expert on this stuff, but the thinking is that that's, you know, there's going to be enough, you know, advance notice of cars turning into that turn lane that somebody's not going to be pulling out only to discover that, you know, Mr. Eastbound is suddenly deciding to pull in and away we go?
So you're saying when the cars are coming eastbound here, if somebody's turning into this position here, this individual turning left out of this location?
That basically, there's an eastbound car, that's the scenario, and I'm asking, there's an eastbound car coming, and now suddenly somebody's turning left, thinking, okay, I'm going to pull out into that center lane.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, you've got that thing, I mean, that's not foreseen as a potential problem?
You're saying, to continue, the eastbound car would then decide to come into the same turning lane where the car comes in?
Yeah, just, you know, that there...
One of the comments that was raised by Dave Ellis was, there should be a break in the striping at this location to eliminate the ability of cars to start moving in or transitioning into the left turn lane for exactly what you spoke about.
Okay.
Right now, what we have with the gentleman that we're working with in the DOT is this is the particular layout that he prefers and that he's so far assigned to. That, that individual, though, you know, he's, he's away on vacation right now. The, you're dealing with the situation here, though, just, the reality is, there's a desire to have a left turn into this particular property.
Got that, got that.
And you've got a limit, you've got limitations with the existing creek here and, and the ramps that are over on this side here, so what we've...
So what's not limited, though, is you don't have to queue five cars, right? If you queued three cars or four cars, you would, you would gain about 20 or 40 feet of space to be able to have that break in the striping before the turn lane started.
Four, correct. We would have 20 additional feet at that location.
And I'm asking here, is by pulling the striping back further to the west, wouldn't you then allow people to give more notice that they were turning into the turn lane so that somebody pulling out could see, oh, they're already in that turn lane? And again, I, you know...
If I...
See, I would do, I would do the opposite.
Increasing it beyond the 100, it's already there. Pulling it the other way. In other words, which makes it safer.
Are you saying by turning the, by shifting the paint, one is, we can't move the striping into the intersection where the two ramps at this location here? This is where...
I think he's talking about just cutting your striping in half, if you will, right there where you are.
Cutting this in half.
So the cars are already pulling into that lane before they reach the point where, where the, you know, somebody pulling left out?
Can you queue six cars instead of five? And actually, the turn lane starts sooner?
What makes it more safe?
The concern is exactly what Lori just said, is the potential for that additional queue to be created because you haven't created, you don't have a well-defined area for stacking.
Okay.
I think if you cut this in half, and this is approximately 11 feet wide here, so you're going to have five and a half feet, you will have cars potentially sitting there.
Okay. And I am asking, what makes it safer? Narrowing the queue or extending it? And you're saying...
I think, I think reducing the queue would perhaps make it safer from five to four cars, because then you're, what you're doing is you're creating that additional 20 feet here to address a transition issue.
Yeah. Okay. I would like to see that. I think that's...
Can the, can the traffic study, excuse me, determine what would be expected as a queue? I guess PM would probably be the peak direction.
Their current traffic study that Mazur prepared involved a queue lane length of 100 foot was required.
Based on their analysis? Was that in PM? Was that the peak?
I don't recall if it was the PM or the AM.
It may even be the AM.
So does it make sense, maybe, do we say we try to limit the left turns out by sign for the peak hour or something?
Well, again, I mean, DOT, you know, there's experts in this, so, I mean, for us to limit that motion, I don't know, you know? That would be contrary to what DOT may recommend.
I think one of the things we can discuss with the DOT is the ability to maybe revisit the length of the queue.
Okay.
Because of some of the constraints here.
And you've pushed it as far to the, the entrance, as far to the east as you can because of the signal, the light?
We push it as far to the east as we can for a variety of reasons.
Oh, and the creek, correct? Yeah, and the creek, of course.
The grading comes into the creek and that area.
So, Chris, the only other comment I have about the ingress and egress is it looks like your curb cut on the egress side, the west side, it's, it's a little bit wonky for the left-hand turn. It's, it's kind of pointing a car the wrong way.
So one of the issues we've had here is, and I think we discussed this a little bit in the last meeting, is the turning movement for the tractor-trailer that's coming in through a low gasoline. If we keep this as a straight curb where we have the striping right now, it would impact its ability to access the site, to, in terms of egress from the site. So we've striped this area here so that the tractor-trailer can continue its movement out.
To make a left?
No.
So maybe, I was assuming that, I was assuming that was more of a curb cut or grass as opposed to striping.
This is striping here so that a tractor-trailer can make its full movement coming out of this intersection and taking a right turn out.
But isn't it going to be inconvenient for every car trying to make a left? They're, they're going to, if they're trying to follow striping, they're either going to end up riding over that stripe to orient themselves to the east or, I'm just, I'm not clear why you need striping to guide a truck. Wouldn't a truck, as long as it's paved?
Well, I put the striping there more, more so to guide the pedestrian.
It allows the truck to go over the striping. And it encourages the cars to stay around it and go straight.
No, but I don't want a car to stay around. Why do you want a car pointing towards the west when they're actually trying to make a left-hand turn there? That's awkward.
But if you avoid the striping, it will be straight.
The striping is intended to bring a car that's egressing perpendicular to Route 82 to take a left turn.
If a car goes over the striping, then you're correct.
Right.
So maybe I'm just not seeing the line correctly, but to me, that line is not perpendicular to Route 82. That line is at an angle to Route 82.
Oh, it is. No, here's, here's the striping.
That's the straight line.
Well, I think, I think maybe you're looking at the curbing right here.
I'm looking at that, yeah. I'm saying, doesn't it make sense to pull that back a little bit? Give a little bit more room.
I have striping right here, which is perpendicular to Route 82, which would direct the cars where they're perpendicular coming out onto Route 82 to take a left turn.
But why wouldn't you pull the curbing back a little bit there? Especially if you're going to reduce the queue by one, if you can get away with queuing going to reduce the queue by one, if you can get away with queuing only four instead of five?
Are you, when you say pull the curbing back, are you referring to pull the curbing back?
Pull those out towards the road, she's talking about.
Because then, the trucks have trouble getting out, so the striping allows the truck to go over the striping, but keeps...
If I'm talking about pulling the curb back and having more available pavement, we're not hurting trucks at all. Trucks will be able to do what they need to do.
No, I thought you wanted to put the curbing...
You're saying take this and push it this way?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Smaller island.
Smaller, okay.
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
Oh, you're just widening the opening, then, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That's something we can visit with the DOT. You know, I'm just thinking outside right now as I'm looking at this and trying to...
I, I don't think it works if you have five cars queuing, right? You need to actually keep that curbing so that cars aren't coming out in the, in the wrong, you want them to kind of come out where the, where the striping ends and the turn lane begins. But if you pull it back by one car and you queue four to, for the left-hand turn in, you've got a little bit more space where cars, it's okay if they're, if they're egressed on the left-hand turnout, they, you can orient them a little bit better if you pull that curbing back.
Here's another alternative that the board may consider. I'm just thinking about this. We just did a set of, a site once before in High Park. What if we did, in order to preserve this green space here, what if we put a meltable curb here and did stamped pavement so it's still directing the cars right here to take a left turn? So you still have that continuous curb line that we're talking about, and it'll allow the trucks that are exiting to drive up and over and out.
I'm sorry, Chris, I missed the key word. Why don't we have a what curb there?
A meltable curb that would allow...
It's just like an angled curb that a truck can ride over.
One brief, exciting moment, I thought it was going to be chocolate.
Would it hear "meltable"?
Yeah.
So what it, what it would do is it would, as I said, it would, you know, we could put a stamped asphalt there and it would allow the truck to drive over it. It would still direct the cars because the cars aren't going to go up a three or four inch reveal.
I'm just trying to, yeah, and maybe it's, again, I haven't, I apologize, I haven't looked at the width of the driveway, but how, how wide is that opening right now? Is it 24 or is it 30?
It's 30.
It's 30? All right, so you've got a little bit of extra space, all right.
So is that something that you, I mean, because I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, we'd probably take roughly eight feet off of this green space area, and I really want to kind of keep as much green space in the front of the site.
I'm fine with that, as long as you can just get it so that the cars are better oriented, and I think the meltable curbing makes sense.
Because then if we are successful with the DOT and reduce this, we can pull that back.
And pulling that back, you just have them coming out at a better, I think a better location where you have less chance that cars are kind of crossing over each other.
We can do that.
You were going through the changes that you've made since the last time we saw this. I'm sorry, we distracted you.
Can I just ask one more question about that turning lane? Is that then being borrowed from the shoulders on either side?
Yes. So part of those shoulders would become, it's primarily being borrowed from this side is where we're getting a majority of the, because we have a pretty wide right-of-way on that side of the road right now.
Has any thought been given to bicycle traffic that's currently using the shoulders?
I don't believe it has, has come up in the discussion here. But with the width of the access, you know, we do have a wider shoulder width over there in terms of six feet being provided along our particular section of the site.
It'll still be six feet?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
But I've seen some of the new bicycle lanes are coming in the center of the road as opposed to on a shoulder. For example, if you look at Dover and Route 22, at the new Crooked Valley Energy Plant, that bicycle lane is through the center lane of the roadway.
You're not going to do that right here. I just want to be clear that that's not what we're asking you to do.
No, but I'm, it's a much longer area of improvements than that's the intent of the bicycle lanes nowadays.
Right.
Okay. Is, is that it, or are we keep derailing?
This is, this is the, this is the extent of, I thought the intent tonight was to discuss these improvements here.
So I had a question. I mean, eventually, you know, I thought one of the master plan items was that there would be an office park just to the east of the site, and that, you know, we've said, well, if that ever happened, there would be, you know, common access that comes in.
So, yeah.
Does this design preclude that in any way, or do you think just where those three eastern most parking slots would be, that would become the egress into the, the office park?
So you are correct, there, the applicant owns the adjoining property in the town of East Fishkill, and that extends also owns property in the town of La Grange. I think one of the earlier concepts from the mid-2000s, they were going back for a rezoning in La Grange and back before it was for an office park. The office park project has been abandoned on this.
Okay.
Right now, there are no plans for the remaining development of the property in the town of East Fishkill at this time. Offices, there's an abundance of office space in Dutchess County right now that's available. So one of the things that was discussed in terms of the master planning of the site, which the DOT asked for, is in the event that there is a future development of this adjoining property in East Fishkill, that there'd be a secondary means of access to the gas station property.
Where there would be a light, or that it would tap into the light, so...
Where they tap into the light, and that would allow left turns to come into the site, and in the future, this would have to be abandoned.
So...
Those improvements. The point of access where that would make the most sense hasn't been studied in detail yet. I would think, though, that the point would be in this location here because it would allow, through here, it's a larger fill.
And I'm sorry, Chris, I missed your pointer there. So which way the cars would go?
The far east, where the top three...
Right, straight out?
Correct, as opposed to through the rear of the property there.
Okay.
The channel's a little bit better defined here, and it would make it easier for crossing. It's not as wide as it is in the...
What are you going to do?
So you'd have to be able to bring in some type of bridge and...
There'd have to be a bridge, and that would come at a later date when, as part of an overall master plan development, but that was within part of the stipulations the DOT outlined.
So that remains a bridge too far.
Chris, in that scenario, are you going to be able to...
Well, I think for this application, you're staying out of the wetlands, right?
There, I believe you have the correspondence from the DEC that there is no wetlands on the site. We are on this property.
And you're not trying to jump the stream, which would be...
We're not jumping the stream. We do have, we're in the process of seeking a permit from the DEC for the discharge into the stream from our small wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
By the way, thank you for remediating the site. I mean, that goes unstated, that it's great to see this thing, because in its current state, it's, it's, it's not really attractive, so this is a dramatic improvement.
Yeah.
Scott, I'm sorry, were you saying something?
Well, if you, if you cross the creek there, you're going to lose a few parking spaces. Have you given consideration of how you, where do you relocate them to?
Right now, we, part of, if we're crossing this creek here, the thought process being is we have some additional parking, and some of the comments with the additional parking being for employees, so that parking would probably be shifted to the adjoining parcel that's owned by the applicant, where there could be additional parking for the employees coming to the place of work.
Then you need a sidewalk, right?
There would be a sidewalk connecting the two.
And then just put a crosswalk or something on your pavement at that point to get them to the actual...
To get them to the actual building.
A couple more questions. Have you been back to the ARB? I think you needed to bring your final plan back to them. Are you scheduled for that?
There was, the architect for the project sent the approval to us. My understanding is they're approved at the July 5th meeting.
Okay, and that was on the current plans, Pam?
No.
Okay. Because I understood you needed to go back to the ARB, that the plan set that they had, had some, the retaining wall information, had a chain link fence on it instead of what I think you're proposing now, which is some type of wrought iron fencing, and there was a couple other differences to the elevations that they thought you had, there was two different plan sets.
I was from the ARB, and he, he was looking for five item pole, and we did it, and this is the final plan.
Okay.
He want to see stone on the building on the sides, and the, we added some stuff, and they want to see a shingle and a canopy.
Okay.
So we gave them all the stuff they have.
Okay.
And as far as I know, I got a final approval. I mean, as far, we met all the conditions Paul asked us for.
And Pam, I apologize, do I have the ARB minutes here? Do we?
You don't have them yet.
Okay.
My understanding was they, they had to go back before them.
Yeah, I thought, I thought there was a question.
We went back, the architect went back to so Paul, and one on one, last Wednesday or Friday, and this is the final plan where they agreed on.
Oh, okay, so you've provided it to the ARB. They have not actually, the whole ARB hasn't actually brought it to their meeting yet, so we just need to make sure that you're on their next agenda.
I have no idea. Far as I know, when we was there at that time, I didn't have to go back. They gave us special...
He may be telling you, you don't have to appear. He may be telling you, you don't have to appear, but I think we have to bring it back into their formal meeting. They'll issue their, their approval and recommendation to the planning board.
We made the changes, and we gave it to him, and it was fine.
Okay. Okay.
We'll, we'll let the architect know he's working on it, engineer, it's Gillespie and Stazoko.
Let's just make sure you get the formal approval back from the ARB.
They're under the impression they have a formal approval because this is the final plan that was forward to us, so I will check on that tomorrow.
Okay. I believe that it has been submitted to the ARB. I just don't think it's come back to their meeting. I think from the July 5th meeting, there were questions and they asked, and then after the July 5th meeting, an additional set of plans or drawings was provided that probably addressed the concern, so it just needs to come back to their next meeting for them to finalize their recommendation back to the planning board.
Okay.
It was still an open switch last we knew, so I think the fact that you guys got everything done, it's just, we need to close it, that's all.
Yep.
And the ARB should have a meeting at the beginning of August?
First Thursday in August.
Yeah, so it'll be before the public, you'll have that meeting before the public hearing, just make sure if you need to be on that agenda, you're covering it.
I'll verify that this supplemental's made, and they're back on the agenda.
Okay. Do we have, and I think one of the issues that came up from that ARB meeting a week or two ago is that there was a difference in the detailed plan for the fence that's sitting on top of the retaining wall. Has that, has the current plan set been clarified, and it's a chain link fence or it's a wrought iron fence?
There's a wrought iron fence.
Wrought iron, okay.
The comment also was, only, only one person, Paul, was asking about the DOT ingress and, and, you know, says, I'm not a traffic engineer, I couldn't answer. I'm front of the ARB, I'm not front of DOT.
Okay.
And he wants me to explain to him about the access of the in and out left turn and stuff like that.
Okay.
That's what there, one person has questions, and I could answer those questions.
Okay. That's okay, though, you've answered them in front of the planning board, and that's all you're required to do for, for the purpose of the ingress and egress in site circulation. That's the planning board's purview.
That's what's the concern, but putting us to the building was, we did it by the book.
So Chris, I just want to make sure the plan set we have is consistent in the fence detail. I, I think your resubmission was, I just, I didn't, I didn't double check. Scott, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it to make sure it was there.
In all honesty, I'm a little confused because we've had, since February, we've had an ornamental fence.
I think it was the plan set submitted to the ARB was an old plan set with regard to the site plan, and so it had a detail of a chain link fence on the retaining wall, and they do usually look at the siding of the retaining wall. So I believe the planning board has the correct version. I'm just making sure before we're in public hearing that we've got the right drawings available to the public.
Also, the ARB, he prefer landscaping, recall Mr. Fence or Retainer Wall. I couldn't answer him at that time.
Okay.
And I told him I have no issue with the planning board approval, I will give it to you.
Okay.
Mitch, I, we're good. We just, we're trying to make sure that gets flattened, to make sure it doesn't resurrect itself at some later date when...
No, if we go back, he's going to, he's going to ask us what the planning board wants, and I want to see what you guys want. If you want to landscaping, I'll do landscaping. If you want to retain a wall, he asked me that specific question, and I couldn't answer him.
Okay.
I can say to the rep that we have the most recent plan here.
Okay.
We have landscaping in front of the ornamental fence.
Okay.
That sits on top of the retaining wall.
Okay.
That's on our plan set that we submitted, and I've got this here in front of you as well, that you can look for yourselves.
Michelle wasn't able to be here tonight, but she would normally, if she had an issue with any landscaping you're proposing, she would normally contact you. We will double check with her and just make sure if she has any questions, she'll reach out to you before the public hearing.
And just for the...
I don't believe she does. I believe in a...
This has not changed since her last review, and she had no comments on the landscaping that we were provided there.
And she always checks it.
Yeah, I, I think she was like the site.
So perhaps we should give...
It's that remaining switch, again.
Yeah.
So we'll, perhaps it may be advantageous to give the landscaping plan to the ARB as well.
Let's talk about the signs. Where are you proposing signs?
Our site sign is printed, one of the comments that came from the DOT was to shift it from the west to the eastern section of the site.
Okay.
I also believe... That was presented to the ARB, has a Sunoco logo on the end of it as well.
Is it following the Greenway lighting conventions to keep downward lighting and no...
Yes, we have all that, that's been reviewed by Michelle for the site.
Okay.
We, one of the comments she had just goes back, I think, two meetings ago, was she wanted us to reduce the lighting in the rear of the facility because of her concern on any sort of species that may be out there in the evening, so we did that.
Okay. And with the change of the sign to the east side of the site, you're well outside of the 100-foot Taconic buffer, right?
We're outside of the Taconic buffer, but we still fall under the purview of the DOT review.
Okay.
Which line is the 100-foot? Is that line on there?
This is not on the DOT improvement plan here. I can, I can bring up a plan.
You can't, okay, there's no line? The 100-foot line isn't on there?
You're talking about for the...
The Taconic.
From the Taconic.
Yeah, you have a 100-foot buffer from the T...
That's a 100-foot buffer, but it's, it's heavier on the, on the landscaping plan, which defines where the sign is. But this is roughly this light line here.
I'm sorry, I can't...
We can't, your pointer's not lit.
This light, there's a very faint line.
Right.
Oh, there we go.
That's the 100-foot?
This is 100-foot.
Okay.
But that's all previously disturbed, though, right?
Correct.
That's all already, okay.
Yeah.
But since you're along a scenic route, byway, the sign can't be visible from the Taconic.
Now, I was just looking at the other improvements in that buffer.
I do think, and I'm sure you, I think the Taconic itself, though, does have the exit warning, exit signs that say what services are available, so I believe you can work with them to have your, your business placed on those.
Unfortunately, the Taconic is going to have, they have a fork and a knife and a nozzle.
Okay.
All the parkway, they didn't have the signs.
Okay.
But the other gas station, they have it, the sign on and the shoulder. We approximately, from the parkway itself, almost 500 feet away the sign is, because from the curb going out to north, to the north side, you got the ramp, and between the ramp and my property, about 100-foot owned by the state, then the 100-foot buffer.
It's a distance away.
It's a distance away.
Okay.
The state owned like almost 100-foot.
Okay.
We, we didn't change the detail of the sign.
Okay.
It's, we use the same detail that's been approved by the DOT at other locations.
Okay. Okay, and, and the only other note I have, and again, Michelle was not able to be here tonight, but she asked me if you had done any recirculation of the updated plan with the, all of the markings, as you understood them from your discussion with the DOT. Has that been the, is that the plan that went to the DOT?
This, this overall plan here, with the exception of, with the exception of, we had a, just a single arrow sticking out here.
Right.
That was the plan that was circulated to everybody, a single arrow coming out. It didn't, it didn't get into the detail of showing a left and a right turn. We assumed from our previous correspondence, which we included in our package with the DOT, that this would be both a left and a right turn out.
Okay.
So we didn't go into that detail. We assumed all that was.
So Michelle's recommendation was to make sure that the final plan showing the two-way egress was shared with the DOT?
Just share with the DOT or share with all the other?
She, she recommended just the DOT. We, they're the interested, or they're the involved agency, right? So.
I, I can, I can send this plan over to the DOT as well.
Okay, okay. And if you would just copy the planning office, then we have it in our records that you provided that version of the plan. I'm fine if it goes by email, however we can keep track of it.
I can send an email over to their secret coordinator and to Greg Bentley and copy you as well, if that would work.
Okay, thank you.
I think Michelle also asked if you get new batteries for your pointer.
I'm not sure that was on the list.
I think it was, I think it was.
I'll do that.
She intended to be here tonight. It's, um, okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
No, I, I think it's, like I said, I think it's great to see the site being put back into use.
When I was front of the ARB, they gave me pre-approval to meet the five conditions. He gave it to me by hand, and we met the five conditions. And he approved it. I don't understand why I have to go back and.
I think he may.
So, so it would, and I'll just use it, I'll just use an example. So if you handed something to me as, as the chair of the planning board, and you said, "Hey Lori, does this look okay to you?" I might look at it and say, "This is great. We'll bring it back to the planning board." I'm not, I can't give you an approval as a single member of the board. It has, approvals have to be issued by the entire board and by a majority of the board. So all we're saying is, you've done what you needed to do. You've submitted your plans back into the ARB. They asked you for changes. You made them. That's good. It's going to come back to their August meeting for them, for the entire board to look at it and, and provide their recommendations.
I understand that, but then I, they voted, the, all the board, they vote. If I meet the first, those five conditions, and meet with Paul and somebody else, is, is approval, is approved.
We just need confirmation from them that they approved it.
Okay, then after, you know, it came to me, and he said, now he started asking me about the DOT. I said, I told him I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah.
I thought we are here front of the ARP. But they did vote. If I meet the five condition, I meet with Paul and some other person, I forgot his name, I'm going to have to go back.
Maybe they gave a conditional approval.
So what, so what happens is, though, they'll do their final action at their August meeting. They'll confirm that they've received what they should have, and then they'll make their recommendation back to us. It'll happen before your public hearing, before this board. It's not, it's not going to be an issue.
Oh, it's fine. I'm not agreeing with you. What I'm, that day, they did vote on it.
Okay.
No, no, what we're saying is, it has to go back to the final.
Yeah, if it's a conditional approval.
We just need to confirm that that's.
I think we're going to confirm. There seems to be a couple of things they may have asked for, which I definitely know I haven't provided to them. So I think we'll give them the whole package and we'll clarify everything.
Okay, great. Um, any other, and I think, we, we already scheduled you for public hearing, is that correct? So you're still.
August 21st.
August 21st, and you, you know you have just about another week. If you haven't done your mailings yet, you got to make sure those go out.
We've started our mailings today.
Excellent, okay, great. Any other questions for us or anything else we need to cover today?
I'd just like to add some.
Oh, great, I'm sorry, Scott.
Before you wrap up, and that is, the amount of fill that you're bringing in, you're going to need an excavation and filling permit, right?
Correct. One of the things we're going to do is we're going to schedule a meeting with Rick, Rick Witt, because we want to talk to him about the floodplain.
Well, that's the floodplain. You'll need that permit as well. And then, do you have driveway profiles, both on the egress and?
We, we have them in our DOT drawings that we're creating. We're creating a separate set of highway.
You know off the top of your head what those grades are?
We are under 3%.
Under 3%, okay.
Is there anything additional we need, Scott, for the public hearing or anything else?
No, I was just, you know, it's hard to visualize that that amount of fill, what kind of slope up to the site you're going to have. Seemed like a fair amount of fill. Now, the elevations didn't seem to change, so was there just a error in the original calculation? Or how did we increase by so much the fill coming in?
Say that again, the elevations didn't seem to.
We just checked a couple spot elevations. In other words, your fill quantity went up.
Our, our fill quantity went up. We, we, at one point, we came in with a preliminary plan in the beginning of this, and then we, we raised the building a foot in this particular area because the floodplain boundary, it's kind of like a, almost like a half-foot increment in between here. So when we kind of extrapolated what that was in terms of that, we felt to be conservative, we wanted to raise the building a foot just to make sure we met the two-foot requirement. So from the original.
How much higher is the new building from the original building? Can you tell me that?
A foot.
No, I mean the building that's there now.
Oh, the original building? The current building right now is at elevation 330.
Okay.
And our building is at 330, three and a half.
Okay.
Scott, is there anything additional? I know that, did you receive the memo from Rick Witt on the floodplain development?
I did. And we're going to, I'm going to reach out to Rick to schedule a meeting with himself and perhaps Michelle and Scott, if you'd like to attend. The wetland biologists would like to have a meeting and go over.
Okay.
And provide some clarification of some comments that were made by Rick.
Okay. I'm not seeing anything in his comments that would be a significant change to the plan. Scott, did you see anything in here that I'm missing?
No, the only thing, just thinking back to the fill, I mean, in this configuration, you know, you have a widening on 82, you're able to make lefts out, you've got a full exit. You're going to be bringing in, I don't know, there're going to be trailers or triaxles, you know, many loads of materials. So I think some consideration should be giving, given to how those trucks are going to get in and out of the site prior to all your final improvements being done. I think we should have a, a handle on that.
We, we can go over that, I think.
Before we issue that excavation and filling permit.
And perhaps it should be done in two phases. One, phase one being the remediation aspect, and then phase two being the filling aspect of the site.
Okay. And then I think the only other thing, Michael, we were just going to mention, the litigation has not yet been settled. So Chris, just you know that there's pending litigation regarding what enables you to.
Correct.
Increase the usage at the site, the building size and all of that.
We actually reached out to Mr. Wood today to ask if he has any news, and he did not have any news.
Yeah, so I think it's no news. It's not good news or bad news.
It's been fully submitted. The paper's supposed to have been fully submitted. We're still waiting to decision. So the, just for the record, the applicant does proceed with this at its own risk and its own expense.
Yeah, and we, we acknowledge that on the record, though. We understand.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anything else from the board or Scott or Michael? All right. Chris, anything else you need from us?
No, I'm good. I'll, I'll get clarification on the ARB, and I will contact you tomorrow, Pam, and I will also circulate for the DOT, and you'll be copied tomorrow as well.
Perfect, and we'll see you in a month for the public hearing.
Yes, thank you, and take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for Klaus Garage amended site plan on Route 52. I know.
Hey, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
I wasn't aware that ZZ Top was scheduled to appear today.
Gold brush.
Nice to see you, Keith.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Ready for something exciting?
I guess that all depends. I hope so.
I've got a package of stuff, I hope, yes.
We do. Do you have your plan that we can put up on the, I know it's a sketch plan review, so it's not required.
I did give it to her, yes.
Do we have a copy? Yeah.
Your disk is over there.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, just take a second. We'll pull it up so that we can.
This looks like O'Hare Airport.
Interesting.
What's the little airport next to, next to it in Chicago? There's two in Chicago.
Midway.
Midway. That's the one I've flown. I've never flown in and out of O'Hare, for whatever reason.
That's O'Hare Airport, right there.
What is?
That.
Good evening. I'm Keith Stoudaher with Cronin Engineering. We are representing the applicant Klaus Garage, Inc. Klaus Garage, Inc. is now owned by Dave Lawrence, who's with us tonight, a local resident, actually lives right here down in Taconic Oaks. He's an onsite owner-operator of Klaus Garage. He's out there on a daily basis. And we're looking to, to make an improvement to the site, and I'll get to that in a minute. I'll just go over some other preliminary stuff. Currently, the existing use of the site is Klaus Garage. It's probably been in continuous operation as an automobile service facility for at least 35 years, and I think under the name of Klaus Garage. I may be wrong, but I think it's been Klaus all along. As for the site, it's 2.36 acres in size. It's relatively level. We're two lots over from the west of the Taconic State Parkway. We are in a split zone. The first 300 feet of the property is zone B1, and the rear part of the property is zone R2. The existing Klaus building.
Is it R2 or R3?
I have R2 on the plan, so I'll have to go with that.
Okay.
The existing facility, building itself, is within the B1 zoning portion of the property. We've done some homework on this project. We've retained the services of Phil Greeley with Mazer Consulting. We've done some traffic counts. We did the counts before the school season was out, so we have some counts in our pockets right now. We retained the services of Mike Nowicki of Ecological Solutions. He inspected the site. We do have a wetland on the east side of the property. I don't have a clicker. On the east, just off-site to the east is a wetland. We had the DEC there. DEC does not regulate this wetland. It's a locally regulated wetland. We've done some exploratory test hole. We know we got good hopewell sand and gravel here, to depths of six, seven feet. It's really good stuff. So the proposal, the proposal is to construct a building with a drive-through capability. We've set it up so that we would separate Klaus Garage in the rear from the front activity with the privacy fence and obviously some landscaping. So you won't see the Klaus Garage portion necessarily from the street. You'll hopefully only see this brand-new building. But the proposal does envision an improvement to the facade of Klaus Garage from that faces the road. We would, right now, it's a block building. We would probably stucco it, and we have an architect. I can go over that in a minute. So the wish list right now is that we're looking to try to get a Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts interested in this site. Right now, we're not thinking that's working out very well, but, and we have met with the DOT on site as well. So we are fully aware that if we were to propose a Starbucks here or Dunkin' Donuts, that we'd have to do a major improvement on Route 52. That would be like a left-turn lane that that DOT is probably going to require. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of effort.
Did they go as far as mention a signal on Hosner Mountain Road or?
No.
Okay, because in other projects, that's come up as a.
Yeah. That has not been brought up at all. No one, no one has mentioned that. So, so we're aware of, if we, you know, if we can, if we can land the product that we're looking for, then we would move forward with the notion that we're going to improve Route 52. The fallback right now is a bank. And right now, we believe the bank does not warrant the left-turn lane based on our conversations with our traffic consultant, as well as conversations with, that he has had with DOT. It might require an improvement such as a widening of a shoulder, but it would not go as far as requiring the left-turn lane on Route 52. We estimate that that left-turn lane is about a half a million dollars worth of work. So that will have an impact on how we go with this project.
Okay.
We did retain the services of a local architect, Waylon Architecture, Steve Waylon. We put together a nice little set of pictures. This is a rendering of what it would look like. Klaus Garage, we have, we maintain the same, same exact entry point into the site. Obviously, we have to do an improvement to the entranceway, but where the driveway is now for Klaus Garage is where the driveway would be for this layout.
Hey Keith.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't there be some significant changes to Klaus's garage? I mean, right now, you guys seem to do a great business, and there's a lot of cars there.
Yes.
I'm looking at this now and thinking, you'd have to cut your cars down by like two-thirds.
Well, I don't know if you can see it on this plan. It's a little bright up there. But we have plenty of room in the lawn area in the second half of the property to park cars.
First of all, where is the, where is the line? Can you, using the, this wonderful, this is a great 3D picture. Where does the line fall? And I apologize for people behind it, but where is the line? The line goes, pardon?
The B1, R1.
The line between the B1 and R2.
The line between the B1 is back here.
Okay, so when you say it would be on the grass, where would the, where would, the parking that you're alluding to on the grass, where would that be?
It would be partially in the B1 and partially in the R2.
Okay, but can you just point? I mean, where?
Oh, I'm sorry. So right here.
Okay.
And then back here.
So in other words, all that would be then, basically that the cement that's in front of the three doors would basically be extended out.
Well, we, we're not going to paint it.
Okay.
We're going to either keep it grass, grasscrete, or gravel. We're not looking to pave the whole thing.
Okay, but either way, I mean, that's where the cars would be.
Yes. I don't know if you have this plan here.
Where's the residential line go?
Residential line is right here.
Are you being in front of that or beyond that?
I'm sorry.
Behind the garage.
Putting, putting a fence in front of your business. I mean, I know it's got a great reputation and da-da-da-da. So you, you don't think that's going to hurt you to put a big fence in front?
He's grown, gotten a big following and.
We have people come from the Bronx, Yonkers, northern New Jersey. I mean, we have a, a big following and, well, actually, you know, locally too as well. But yeah, I really don't think it's, the business is built up enough where it took it over four years ago to where it's at a point where it's self-sustained and, you know.
Okay.
I feel comfortable with, you know, under your point of view, is that, you know, you could put that up and then damage, you know.
No, I, yeah, no, it's not my point of view. I was just, I was literally asking.
No, it's a good, no, it's a good point.
All right, so this here is the zoning line right there, that black line.
Okay, ah, okay.
So the fence would be right here. So we would, we would screen off the vet, the animal hospital here to here. So that would be our main separation between the two. You're obviously going to be able to see through here. But again, this is preliminary. We're not sure if we're going to land the coffee shop that we would like, or even, we're thinking of being a convenience store with a drive-through, but that again, would warrant the left-turn lane. So our fallback is we're looking at banks right now. And, you know, what we do need though, and what we're hoping to get out of tonight is, no matter what we do, we're going to need some help from the zoning board of appeals. And we would hope that if the board has a positive view on what we're trying to do here, that we can be sent to the zoning board of appeals for a couple of things. We have parking located within 100 feet of the, of Route 52, so I think that would require variance. We have, right now, we're showing outdoor seating. If in fact, we do land the coffee shop, that would require a variance. And the third thing is, we would need the ZBA to interpret that we can maintain and expand the existing use of the site, since it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So we, I mean, this is, like I said, it's been a business in continuous operation for 35 years, and we'd like to keep it that way. And by doing this, I think we would need to have the zoning board at least interpret whether or not we can maintain that or continue that use with, with an addition.
What's the, what's the square footage on the repair shop now?
27 plus, between 27 and 28.
Okay, and what's the square footage on the proposed building?
I had it at 2,000 or 2,200. I don't know, I got on my planner.
So Keith, I think you have, you have probably a challenge as far as potentially negating your existing, pre-existing non-conforming use based on an additional use you introduced to the site.
Well, that's why we need to do it with the zoning board.
Right, and I think one of the things that, one of the, and I'm not, apologies, I don't know off the top of my head, and Michael, I know you were looking at this. Do, do we know if we can, I don't think we can park cars in the residential zone, right? I don't think you can have any commercial use in the residential zone.
So with it being pre-existing non-conforming, let's say there were, he was parking X number of spaces back there, then.
He does now.
Then that can, could continue. But if he would like to go and increase it, you know, X plus five, that would be in, in larger than the non-conforming, and that would not be permitted unless he got approval by the zoning board.
When they're proposing building, and a new building on the site, and we're going to, and we're saying they can.
That needs zoning.
So, so part of what I think he keeps going for is, um, the interpretation, I think, would be pretty, is what's necessary here, because there's the term use in the code for the enlargement of use. So if the zoning board interprets the use to be both the garage and also the new bank or coffee shop, then it would be a bigger enlargement. But if they're interpreting that as separate uses, then they made more leeway in their plan.
I believe that we're entitled right now to increase the size of this building, the Klaus building, by 50%. So we can go from 27 to.
Right.
Forty-two, whatever it is.
Right.
Right, but, you know, we, we have such a good piece of property on a state road here in a good location. You know, we, we feel that, you know, we'd like to expand the viability of this property by doing something here in the front.
With the, with the privacy fencing that you're suggesting to the rear of the new building, is there a way to, where's the property boundary there? Is it, it's back quite a bit, right?
This is the line here. It's right, right now, you know, the, the animal hospital just started construction, as I think like last week.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're putting still fence up right there. That's the, that's the sideline there.
So I think the first question is, you, you mentioned that you have some outdoor seating and things like that, and you have it to the front of the property within the 100-foot setback of Route 52.
Right.
Why can't the building be moved back a little bit and either keep that out of the 100-foot setback, or maybe move that seating to the rear of the property? 100-foot setback, or maybe move that seating to the rear of the property?
Well, then, then, this, this, this break, this, this break in the property right here, kinda creates a natural point where we wanna break off from the auto, auto business to the front, right, this is an existing property line here, so it's, it seems like a natural breakpoint, number one. Number two, if I just move this, move building back, or move the seating back here, that pushes my drive-through back, and then it takes away from parking in the, for the garage.
Does it have to be a drive-through use?
No.
Just asking, I mean, this is sketch plan, right, so...
The bucket list is Starbucks. If we can get, if we can get M&amp;T in here, we'd be happy. If not, then we're, you know, we have a fallback C, and I don't know if we should discuss it tonight or not, but...
You don't have to discuss it, we're, I'm just asking you whether the drive-through is necessary, because you, you're cre, you're creating by needing the drive-through or wanting a drive-through, you're creating this non-conformance with the seating in the front, and...
Well, the parking too, the parking in the front, I believe, per your code, requires the variance, so I need some parking in the front.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just asking if there's a way to shift it back, and lessen the variance you might be looking for.
I can possibly move it back a little bit, or we can look at eliminating the outdoor seating, I mean, I, I, I think we can work on that.
Okay.
Yep, so we, you know, we're, we're not sold 100% on what we're showing you right now, because we're still trying to land possibly a tenant here, but, yeah, so, could we remove the seating? Absolutely. Would it be a nice little feature for the town to have, be able to sit out there and have a cup of coffee? Yeah, I think it would be, so, there's some things we, we, you know, I think would have to be looked at.
Keith, what's the reaction of DOT been? I mean, I remember when the, that parking lot first appeared, you know, for the cars being sold, the DOT kinda weighed in heavily, how have they been reacting to this?
We met with Rock at the site, Rock DeNigroff in DOT, and he didn't seem to say he had no issues with what he was, we were standing right out here, right at the entrance.
You gotta meet with Bentley, you gotta meet with Greg Bentley.
I know, I haven't gotten there yet, but...
Okay.
His, his, his whole focus was, you're gonna, you're gonna need a left turn lane here for the coffee shops that we're looking at.
Okay.
What is the status of the car sale operation? I wasn't aware of the fact that DOT came downhill.
I wasn't aware of that either until just now, I did not know that.
It was, again, it was the proximity to 52, was the issue.
Right, parking too close to the, to the state highway.
So I take it that would be discontinued if you moved forward with this plan?
If we, if we, if we move forward with this plan to get a bank or coffee shop in here, then the car sales would...
Be abandoned.
Would be abandoned, and then we would just do the automotive service in the back.
Got it.
Okay. Does that reduce the existing non-conforming at all, or would it just be moved to the back?
Question, I would say reduce.
Okay, okay.
I mean, cars have been sold there for 30 years, 35 years.
So I think as you, as you look to move from sketch plan into an application, full application, probably just explaining any reduction in use, any additional, you like, because you're gonna need, you're gonna need that, that zoning decision, right, on use, whether it's a change of use, whether...
Yeah, I need to go to the zoning board, so if you guys send us there, we can go work with them, and then come back, and then we can re-craft our plan based on what we get through the zoning board, and come back here, hopefully have more solid, definite plan that we'd like to present, that would probably be the best for us right now, because we know we have some challenges here, we know we gotta deal with the DOT, we know we gotta deal with the DCD, Dutchess County Health Department, but before that, I can't go to them unless I know that I can put a second use up here and, and get my variances.
Yeah. I think you definitely, you definitely need to go to the ZBA and have that conversation with them. I'm not sure you're ready to have a conversation about site variances, right? You need to, I think you need to get a little bit further down the path to see if there's a way we can mitigate some of those setback variances and things.
I think we'll try to mitigate it if we, if we...
We mentioned it, but I don't think you, I don't, I, I don't think we should have a lot of things in that 100-foot setback if we can avoid it, the more, the more...
I hear you, and, right now, I think we're willing to take out the outdoor seating, so if that helps, then it's just, just a couple parking spots, then...
All right, okay.
So you're gonna give them a hallway pass to go to the ZBA?
I think they need a hallway pass to go see.
That would be nice.
Scott, is there anything else that, that we should talk about, just as an initial, I know it's sketch plan, but an initial pass at the, I heard Keith say these, they've got traffic information, so we're certainly gonna want to understand the traffic.
You checked that?
There's a, there's a, like, there's a spot right here, there's a fringe spot like right here, and right here, that comes onto the property, but I think that's eliminated now because the animal hostel's being built right there, in the floodplain, so, I think we're okay.
Okay, okay. We had, did, did we have development at the site that was permanent, or wasn't there something happening at the site? Was there construction at the site or not? Maybe I'm getting this confused with another one?
Construction.
Or paving or something, or wasn't anything going on there?
I know there were forests a while back to pave.
A while back, and I think that was the issue that would all of a sudden DOT kind of...
Okay, all right. Do you have other questions for us?
Scott, what, um, you know, what were you saying about the Hazner Mount, about possible traffic light or something?
There was previous traffic studies done in that corridor, I think the one that comes to mind was when the, when the Sports Dome, I think it might have been the Sports Dome or something else in that area.
Oh, at the...
And, and Hazner Mountain was identified as a concern, so depending, you know, if you're getting into a left turn lane, which is pretty substantial, I don't know if the traffic light came into play or not.
Yeah, it's not been brought up, I mean...
But you only spoke to Rock.
I talked to Rock, so I know we gotta go above, over him, I realize I'm gonna feel really be doing all that, again, depending on what, where we're going with this.
Yeah, 'cause I think you should really vet that out...
Oh, we are.
For a drive-through, because if it's a million-dollar improvement, it might take the drive-through right off the table, and now you're back to a bank or maybe some ancillary use to the automobile repair.
That's exactly where we're going with it, bank or accessory ancillary use to the existing business.
Okay. So Pam, we can make the referral over to the ZBA to get a, a zoning determination on use and potential for the change of use with your pre-existing non-conforming, and then, you know, certainly, you can talk to them about some of the setback things, but I think, you know, we'll have to get a little bit further into an act, application with site plan before we finalize exactly what, what other variances you might want from the ZBA.
This is just step one right now, so, I appreciate everybody's input, and look forward to seeing you again, thank you.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you guys. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Morrow Equipment Site Plan on Lime Kilne Road. Have a good night. And this is also a sketch plan review, so not a full application yet, it's a discussion.
Okay.
Yep, and that's important to understand, sorry, Teri Ann Hahn, Principal, LADA PC, Land Planners, we're the site planners for the project. With me this evening is Craig Schumate from Morrow Equipment, and this is an application for, a sketch plan application, to talk about the use, we have a couple of questions, and, and just sort of start the, start the process.
Okay, do we, and I apologize, we, we'd like to have your plan up on the screen if we can, do we, Pam, do we have a copy of the plan over there, if we can just...
Okay.
Get it set up. Pam, Melissa, so you can go ahead and give us your overview.
Okay, all right, no problem. The, just one quick thing, Chuck Gank could not be here this evening, and he apologized, but I do just want to put in for the record that we have permission to be here from the owner, in case you, you need that for anything.
We'll, we'll take that, you can hand it to me, I'll, we'll make sure that goes into the planning record.
We're pretty sure nobody comes to see us on a whim. Nobody says, hey, that's a lark.
Yeah, and Chuck would not...
We do appreciate the formal permission, though, it's good, we don't, we don't like neighbors coming in to develop their other neighbor's property, so...
Well, and part of the reason for this is...
Not without permission, anyway.
That's right, we, we had hoped to be able to call ourselves a contract vendee, but the contract isn't quite formalized yet, so this is, this is...
No, we appreciate the letter, we'll keep that in our record.
Up and up, so even though the applicant, the owner did in fact sign the application, it just enables us to, to be here this evening. Okay, so, this property is located on Lime Kilne Road, the exit ramps are over here, Route 84 is up here, this is going back. There's an existing contractor's recycling yard that's occurring in this area of the property here. In this process, putting together the sketch plan application, one of the things that came up is that technically, this property, even though Lime Kilne Road goes right down the middle of it, is at one parcel.
So it's got a land hook?
Yeah, so the applicant for Morrow Equipment is interested in purchasing only this portion of the property.
Okay.
And so we had put together the, our EAF and the application for only that parcel. I think in this process, one of the things that is going to occur is that the owners will be submitting a subdivision application prior to us moving along in this process.
Yeah, we would at minimum need to do that concurrently, because you'll obviously need the subdivision before there's any property transfer anyway.
I think the intent is for them to do it prior.
Okay, that's fine.
So that, so we're all on the up and up, and that, that way, it's very clear what it is that we're working with. So our attention, so I've provided this for you, so you can sort of see what's going on, but our intention is to only be working on this.
Do you have a sense of, I'm, I'm sorry, Mike, of the size of what the parcel you...
Yeah, this one's approximately 25 acres.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, where's the park and ride?
It's a shade area.
For a frame of reference?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's about there, okay, thank you. So there would still be...
I did this for a different purpose, but it would be useful.
So there would still be fields between 84 and this facility?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, there's the park and ride right here.
So the, the park and ride is in this little thing.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
So this, this parcel is owned I-1, and it has, like I said, the contractor's recycling yard is in this area here, there's a big cornfield back here.
Okay.
There are two areas of wetlands in this area on the, on the, on the west side, and another area which is associated with a small stream out back here on the west side, east side and west side. The proposal is for Morrow Equipment to construct a 26,000-square-foot contractor's yard.
And that's the yard, and that's not the building?
No, I mean, building and yard.
Okay.
Okay, so 26,000 square feet is the building, and I should, Craig, do you want to explain what Morrow does?
Yes.
We'll have you just come up to the mic so we can catch you, if you don't mind, thank you.
So Morrow Equipment is a, in the business of renting and servicing tower crane equipment. We are a nationwide company, and these buildings and what you're looking at are what we call service facilities, so they warehouse and service the, the tower crane equipment and other components. So we do that nationwide, and we have a model, and this is typical of what we do in various locations around the country.
Okay.
So, these cranes, once, I would assume 90% of them are on their way into the city? I mean...
Yeah, it's a, it's, we, you know, we cover, this would service a regional area, but primarily, as a percentage, you'd be looking at the vast majorities going down into the Manhattan area.
Okay.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
And then, so they, when they come, when they get rented, they would be loaded on trucks and go out to market and be erected, and those would stay there for a long time, depending on the project, and then when, same thing, when they come down out of the market, they are dismantled and brought back in, serviced, prepped, re-engineered, repainted, recertified, and stored and ready to go back out.
The, the storage of the crane equipment itself, does it include any, like the motors or anything like that, or is it primarily the, I'll call it stationary parts?
Well, as, again, as a percentage of the equipment, mostly stays just, it's mostly a truss, a steel truss, it's eight foot square, 20 foot long, is the typical truss section, and those are inventoried and stacked neatly. The cabin section of a, of a tower crane is what you have on top, and that is where the trolleys and cable winches, and, and the electrical components that, that swing it around and control, are in that, and that is also tested, recertified, and, and fixed and maintained, both at this facility, and then our technicians that work out of these facilities are out in the, in the market, on job sites, keeping these pieces of equipment running safe and...
Are they electrically operated, or, or would a combustible engine?
They're electric.
They are electric?
They're electric.
So, are they, I'm sorry for getting off, you would actually erect these cranes and do a test on them, and then break them down for transport, or are you just collate the parts, if you will?
Yeah, yeah, we just, all testing electronically on that cabin can be done inside that building, complete test will be done.
If you're looking for like metal fatigue and things like that, yeah.
Yeah, much like a diagnostics at your automotive, they're, they're fully gone through, tested, they're today's state-of-the-art equipment, has software in it and the whole bit, and, and then the truss components are, you know, made...
So the height of these cranes is irrelevant to this discussion?
It, it, it really is, yeah.
But you're asking for a 42-foot-high building, so I just...
Nobody do have a service crane, no?
The, the answer to that is correct, however, we do intend, intend to have a piece of mobile equipment erected on the site in order to pick up those pieces, because you can't do that yourself, you pick them up, and you, from the back, it, it's a piece of equipment that, it runs on rails, and it, it, it picks up equipment here, swings it around, puts it into the building so you can maintain it.
Okay, and how high is that? I mean, tree level, da-da-da-da, I mean, so this would be plainly visible from 84?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it would be visible, yeah, it's, it's whatever it says on here, it's 142 feet high.
Our application went in for 145, just to make sure.
Okay, see, I thought that was the crane you were putting together, and that's why I was suddenly...
And what color is that crane?
It's, it's yellow.
We have, in the past, talked about green, but that's...
I think initially in some of our discussions, there was a discussion about possibly painting it something other than white yellow.
Or maybe even blue or something that, yeah, because if you're up that high, you're probably well above the trees, right?
Yeah, yes. Again, it's a...
Is that, is that easily accomplished, or is that a huge thing?
It's not preferred, for one, it's a, it's a, it's a color that represents our company.
Okay.
You're changing your company color, so that's what, you know, is...
Change is good.
And you've seen these in the landscapes of cities, you, you all have seen a crane, you know what it is, up in the, up in the sky, it is a, a truss piece of equipment, it's not a solid mass, and you do visually see through these things fairly well, with a backdrop of trees and hills behind it, it's not as noticeable as, as you might have in your, in your vision, so...
Okay, do we have a, a copy of that picture in our, in our file?
You do.
Okay.
And this piece of equipment is, again, at the 145 is the, is what we are, right now proposing and envision using, but we might pull this down, it might get, it might have a job that needs to go to, we might put up another one that's lower in the...
But that would be your maximum, you've provided us the absolute maximum you would build on this site.
Would you have signage mounted on that?
We, we typically have a, just the word Morrow on the, the counter gym of that thing, and again, very typical of what you'd see on a job site, it's the width of this...
Eight-foot-high letters, basically.
It's not, it's not backlit, it's, it's just a sign.
And the crane itself, is it lit at night, or is it dark at night?
It's dark.
Okay.
Couple things, just to follow up, you mentioned, you know, about building height, so we have the, the mobile piece of equipment, but we also have a building, I have a photograph of a typical... I have a photograph of a typical building that Morrow is doing, just so you can see what they're looking at.
Okay.
And you would go to our architectural review board, of course, for review of any, any construction?
Just to give you an idea of what, what we're looking at.
This, this photo that you're looking at would be very representational of what we would want to construct, in shape, size, colors, almost everything there.
Your M is blue.
So how does the crane move the stuff inside the building?
Well, inside that building that you see is two hundred feet long, and it'll have another crane in there called a bridge crane.
Ah, okay.
Picks it up and it, and then carries it. We're dealing with equipment that weighs tons, so there's a crane inside that building as well.
Okay. So the, the first crane, and I apologize, what kind of crane that was?
That's a tower crane.
Tower crane, just gets it to the front door?
Just gets it, it, it loads and unloads the trucks, and it neatly stacks and stores the inventory. It's what's needed to move our inventory around.
And how high do you stack your inventory typically?
We typically stack it, those sections, again, are eight foot square, they're laid down, and we usually go about three highs, so that'd be twenty-four feet would be what we would typically see.
Okay.
With the top of that big.
That should be below the, below the tree line, right?
A big crane there, is there any need for, you know, a light at night to warn, you know, low-flying planes or something?
That is something that we put in an application through FAA, we always get a, a check on it, and that would be something if it was in, it can be fairly close to an airport, and they still wouldn't require it because it depends on the flight path.
Right, exactly, exactly.
This, we've kind of already investigated, it, it does not look like it's in a flight path, and because of the other elements around us, there's all, the high-power lines are way taller than us, we have a cell phone power.
The tower?
I know that, I know that the power lines, there's a lot of helicopters that run up and down there to check out.
Those are, those are going to be much taller than this. Our site is probably one of the, if not the lowest place geographically in that area, so even putting this up, we're going to be below, we figure, certainly the power lines, that's, and below the cell phone tower site across at the Department of Transportation.
Couple things about the building itself, it has sections, so there's a front and back section that are twenty feet high, and then the middle section is approximately forty to forty-two feet high. Depending on how we understand the idea of average grades, we, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we would need any kind of special dispensation for that, that extra, the extra height. Building is basically flat all the way around, so, you know, part of the building is twenty feet, part of the building is forty feet, so is that an average of thirty feet? You know, you guys need to tell me.
We would look at the peak height.
That's what I figured, so.
And, and usually we would measure, and, and your, your roof appears fairly flat, it's usually the height to the mid-rise of the peak of the roof, so you're, you're probably going to need a variance. I think our maximum is thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And you're at forty-two. I don't know if forty-two is your peak, you may be at forty-one or forty, but you'll be, you'll be over that.
So all the trucks that are leaving, when these things are all ready to go, and they, I assume those are what we see on the highway as oversized loads?
No, they're not oversized loads because they are not, the width is only eight feet, so they fit on just a, a flatbed tractor trailer.
Oh, okay.
And give or take, how often are you moving cranes in or out of the site on the, on the tractor trailers?
Well, that's, that's just all on, depending on the rental orders that come in, there's.
I mean, is it fifty a week? Is it five a week? I mean, just give me a.
So if you average, and that's all about what we could do, it's usually going to be about one or two truckloads a day. People see this facility and they think just a lot of trucks, and it really isn't. And the reason you can get that average is, again, a job, it's going to vary in, in number of trucks, because it varies in how tall that structure is. Usually you're hauling forty-foot structures, so if you have a couple hundred feet, it's going to take, you know, half dozen or even up to ten truckloads to get that in, and that'll all come in in a couple days. It takes a while to load a truck and get it there, so you can't just have them all come in in a day. So in a, in a, in a couple-day span, it may seem kind of active, and then you may not see any trucks for weeks.
So averaging one to two a day, what would you say the typical peak would be for a site of this size? Is it fifteen for?
Peak number of trucks in a day?
In a day?
Again, because of the logistics of being able to load a truck, you're, you're still only probably looking at maybe a half dozen loads a day would be the most.
So if we say six to ten, then?
That would probably be a good, good number to use.
Do you own your trucks, or you hired that out?
They hired that out.
Couple other things to consider, we're looking at between twenty and twenty-five employees. There was a question in the Morris's letter regarding the water usage. That was a, a number that we previously used, that was a double-shift scenario, that's not what we're looking at here. This is strictly daylight hours, Monday through Friday operation, and I, I say that even more so because what occurs is, back behind here in the storage area, there are no lights.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, it'll be lit to the building and around the building, but there are no lights.
So you load it the day before?
But I'm assuming it's fenced in and whatever.
Yes.
What side, what size fence are you typically putting around that?
Six foot.
Six foot chain link, yeah.
Okay.
It's for, you know, just to secure the property, we don't have a whole lot of people carrying off.
I was going to say, I don't think people are going to be, yeah, I get it, I get it.
But you know, the, the, the power cords that run, this is, it is electric, is, is run by a, a big copper wire that's, you know, the diameter is quite large. There's a lot of copper in it, seems to be a lot of people really, in, in certain economic times, people that, that kind of ebbs and flows, but they come in and want to, want to just cut that up and haul it off, so.
But just getting into the, so you drive in town to city, and usually the trucks like to leave early, so you, I mean, they might be leaving your yard at five AM, something like that, but they're getting loaded the day before, there's, there's no loading at early, right?
They have to, you know, this is part of the value of this design, is that off-street parking, if they come in, you know, before hours, they can park until we open up, and then when they come in, then we can get them loaded or unloaded.
But the only thing that'll happen in, early in the morning is them leaving?
Pulling in and parking, yeah.
Pulling in and pulling out?
Right.
I, I would urge you to reconsider the lighting for just that scenario, plus in the afternoons, I mean, I just think, you know, it gets dark in the winter.
Yeah.
You know, so you might want to include that in your initial proposal, is the ability to, to light the yard when needed.
Yeah, 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 and we, we want to put enough lighting.
When needed, I don't think you want to have it lit twenty-four hours.
No.
Right. When we're, and we're, you know, seven to four-thirty is our typical day, and during night, we don't just leave the lights on.
Right.
It's not a matter of advertising, or, you know, we just don't want it to look like your local Walmart. It's the lighting that we would use would, would be downcast, and it would be strictly for security purposes.
Security.
We're going to have video cameras that are monitoring the, the property.
I, I think the way that you explained it to me at, at one point was that you really just don't want to be moving that equipment around in the dark. You need to be able to see it.
You need to be able to see what you do.
So lighting wouldn't help, you know, in that way.
We are just a typical Monday through Friday, Saturdays are becoming a little bit more common when, in the in-and-up market like this, but it's during normal operating hours. We think we're a pretty friendly operation in that it's, you know, not a lot of lights at night. There's no, very little noise, since this crane is electric, so you don't hear noise, there's no emissions.
Are you, are you doing any training here, or no?
We don't do any training in here, no.
No training?
No, we do training actually at our corporate office in Oregon, that, that companies from all over the, the nation send their crews to there to get trained on how to operate this, these pieces of equipment, and we don't do any of that, but it's a low impact. We do do some pressure washing of the equipment, and that goes into a state-of-the-art system that's what we call closed loop, and much like a car wash, we capture that.
And that's inside the building?
And that's inside.
Okay.
Where's the facility that currently services these cranes?
This, for this market, it currently is in Millwood, south of here, and.
Down Westchester.
Lease facility, and the yard is quite small, and we're looking to invest as a company in this market. We, so this is just a, a market that we've done very well in for a long time, we've been in this area for a very long time, and we want to invest in, in it for, you know, decades to come, but we want to be able to grow and accommodate that, and where we're at now just will not allow for that growth. It's landlocked, we can't lease more space, it's just not, it's not adequate. We're having to ship a lot of our inventory and equipment to Manassas, Virginia, which is not economically feasible, it's not convenient, it's not efficient, so.
But you, you've got, I mean, you've got cities in Connecticut, you've got Albany, you've got New York City, obviously, and that whole market, you've got Long Island. Is this the, is this the site, then, that would be able to?
This will be the site to service Boston and all the way out even into Pennsylvania.
Fantastic, okay.
We cover a, a regional hub for that market, so.
Okay.
We are a nationwide leader in, in what we do, and we have the largest inventory in the nation.
Great.
Okay. Do you have other questions for us?
I just, just to confirm, this would in fact be contractor's yard under the I-1 zone? I think that that.
I think Michelle confirmed that for us. She's our planner, again, wasn't able to be here tonight, but yes.
Okay. And then the other, the other question was a confirmation of that, what they call the note with respect to the one-hundred-foot buffer area from eighty-four, that, that does not apply at this particular location, because we have a, the ramps don't, aren't included in that particular distance. That's the way she explained it to, to us, but just wanted to be sure.
I trust Michelle's judgment on that. She's very careful when she looks at things like that.
Because that would radically affect what we can and can't do, so I just wanted to, that's one of those things that we were very concerned about.
Scott, unless you see anything that makes you hesitate there, I'm.
This was the, I'm, I'm sorry, this is, as far as the archaeological?
No, 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 this is, this is the note.
Hundred-foot buffer from eighty-four.
Yeah, the hundred-foot buffer note, you know, in the bulk regulations.
Okay.
This, this space.
So the, the loop of the exit ramp is a little bit closer than a hundred feet, but the eighty, I-84 itself is well, well further than a hundred feet from this site.
Marked at six fifty.
So it's six fifty.
All right, so, so there was that. The archaeological, we just, that was something that came up, we will follow up on that, so we don't have to worry about that. I believe I have a story associated with that from what we've been told, and so we will follow up to clarify what that actually was.
And then I know there's the, the recycle facility in the front, is that intended to remain, or that's going to be?
At, at the moment, we're, we're trying to work with them and, and, you know, hope to leave it in place as long as it's possible for that to occur.
I would just think that in the site plan needs to be accurate in what it's depicting at the.
Yeah, I, I do believe that there was a question that came up that looks like the recycle yard is within the one-hundred-foot buffer area. Best that I can tell, I think that's absolutely correct. We already know that the existing drive which shows up here comes around here, and they are using all the way up into this area, and they are using parts of that, so yes, it appears, it's not shown on the survey at the moment, but it does appear that they are already exist, using some portion of the existing buffer. With respect to our use of the buffer, just to follow up, the, we have a minimal amount of additional disturbance associated with the, the buffer area, which is just some grading in this area, a stormwater basin that will occur in this area, and a small bit of grading and replaming of the existing drive in this area would be, would occur within the buffer area, but we have no.
It may have some minor permitting needed to.
Correct. Yep, so I just wanted to, to clarify that.
And the only other thing in, in a Morris comment was the site distance, leaving the site.
Uh huh.
I think you're going by some old topo maps, and it doesn't accurately reflect, I think there's a berm in the front, you know, fronting Lime Kiln Road, so I mean, being that you're going to have long trucks leaving the site, you're going to have to just take a look at, at the site distance.
All right, we can look at that. Not a problem.
And I'm sorry, Scott, who is operating that reclamation or recycling facility these days?
Who is? I believe that would be Metzger, Metzger Construction.
Scott, the only other note I had here for myself was more, more about the weight of the vehicles and whether there's any concern. It sounds like if the parts are only a couple of tons, maybe they're more than that.
I don't think you have any overweight. Oh, it's D?
Now they have to be rated for the highways that they're working on.
Okay, so is Lime Kiln rated the same way I-84 would be? I don't think you're on a huge portion of it, but it's.
Right.
Well, as long as you're not operating with overweight permits, you're, they're no heavier than any other legal commercial vehicle.
I just had it as a no because I wasn't sure. You said crane, and I think very, very heavy, so.
No, right? Other than your, other than maybe your counterweight.
I get it, I'm just asking, I'm asking the question.
Are your counterweights overload, or no?
No.
Okay. All right, so, so you know you may have some, some permitting, we talked about the site distance on the road, you've provided for us an overview of hours of operation and things like that, but a formal application will, will want all that, all that detail, typically also things like number of employees at the site and that sort of thing. I don't think in this case, we're worried about traffic, but I'm going to talk a little bit more because that sounds like really heavy rain, so I'm going to, I'm not sure we want to leave for the next, next two minutes, I'll go two minutes. You'll also need to go to the ZBA for your height variance on the building, and let's talk with Michelle and just double-check the buffer on eighty-four, make, just make sure that all the ducts are in a row. Michelle's going to be the right person to, to work with from the planning office to help make sure that any additional variances or things that you need to request, you, you have documented, and you're kind of in front of it before you're.
I know at the dome, we did a balloon test, I don't know if the board wants to consider requesting a balloon test?
I'm, to me, I, it just seems like such a small structure, I, I don't, I mean, I think the balloon would actually probably be bigger than the top of the crane, but maybe I'm not right about that.
I'm just putting it out there.
The dome was this massive, completely opaque structure versus the crane.
And you're in a little busier area, too.
And by the way, the crane is moving, too, so it's.
Yeah.
Creating the, the visual is going to be a lot more difficult to.
What, what might be helpful, though, even if we're not going to do that, I think you can, with CGI, you can probably give us kind of a visual of what it might look like from the approach from eighty-four, from Lime Kiln, what's the view, what's the view going to look like into your site? How will that crane appear above the trees? That sort of, that would be helpful to us to see. So maybe, I think, Scott, maybe if we look at that, that might be more, I don't want to say informative, but, but probably easier to kind of visualize than the balloon, which isn't going to look like really a crane, I don't know. I didn't find them.
It will give you an idea, though, of the height above the treetops, though.
Yeah.
And from what points can you or cannot see the crane?
Right.
Whereas an illustration is.
That's what we would need to know, is really what, what angle, what direction do you want that view replicated or imposed on the photo or something, you know?
I think what we would want is for you to sort of assess the property to see where it would be most visible from typical roadways, right? So to me, you know, westbound, eastbound eighty-four, what are they going to see? And then Lime Kiln certainly is the other border road. I'm not, I'm trying to think what the other, the, I'm trying, I, I don't think there's any other side roads, I don't know, Ed, or.
No, there's, there's not, because up, up here, where you would go up to the top of Lime Kiln, where you took cross.
But now you're coming up, you're actually, you're, you're almost going to be.
And then the other way, you're going down to Julie's Jungle.
Right, right. I think if you, if you do those kind of, those, I'll call it four views, so coming up from Lime Kiln, down from Lime Kiln, west from eighty-four, and east from eighty-four, I, I think that's, see where you think a driver would see the highest, right?
Yeah, I think the three up on the, basically up on the overpass, because that's the high point, so that's, that's the most obvious part, then the two directions on eighty-four. Coming this way, there's just too many trees, so it'll be, it'll be a, a little bit, a bit of a challenge to get the graphic right.
And that's okay, if you think there's really only three, three, kind of, I'll call it most visible points, maybe just share with us, okay? And, and for the one where we don't think you'll see it at all, just, just show us, hey, this is, you're just going to see trees like you see trees today.
Yeah, because we typically do that with some-
I know we've got the tension lines in there, too, and so, I'm, I'm aware, so, um, it may even, yeah, you may only need to do three of them, but just at least, even if we're just looking at trees from that fourth area, just show us what that might look like.
Photograph is not complicated.
Okay.
Not a problem.
And you can kind of superimpose your, yeah, okay. And I apologize, you said the crane, the tower crane will be there, and you may have, and, is there ever two cranes in use at the site? It's only ever one, but sometimes you take the tower crane down and send it somewhere?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, all right, and it will never be higher than a hundred and forty-five feet?
Right.
Okay. If, I, I don't know what technology is doing, or, or where, where that goes, if you think it's going to be a hundred and fifty, if you think it's going to be, just give us a, the number that gives you a little bit of leeway if, if things change and significantly.
Like I said, it's, uh, that's the tallest one we have.
Okay.
And we don't need it taller to do what we do, so.
Okay, and I think you said you're going to stack the trusses three high, which would be, give or take, twenty-four feet, so I, I think that's going to be below the tree line pretty much all the way around? I can't, I'm trying, I, I can't think of a place where maybe one of the exit ramps on eighty-four, but I don't think we need to worry about that. I think keep, stick to the views from the highway and the views from, from Limekiln.
And the way that we've got it graded at the moment, um, this is going to go down just a little bit anyway, so, it's, right, however, it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a hill, but it's all going to go down, so.
And that's all gravel?
The, the, the crane is-
Majority is gravel, or?
The, the majority, all of this stuff around here is gravel, this is concrete, because that's where the trucks go.
Concrete? Concrete or asphalt?
No, concrete, this, this will be concrete, it'll break and become asphalt, go out. It's not concrete all the way out, but around the building is concrete, because they come to rest. And they're carrying, you know, the, everything's-
So you're going to do drainage, and you've got stormwater and all kinds of stuff to do as far as that goes, so.
Yeah, we have some general ideas of where we're going to do it, um, we look, we're going to look at some infiltrators, so we've got some test holes that we need to do, but we just needed to get a general feel, because, again, this is all part of the, just the due diligence period, um, and to see if this is something that would be favorably of interest to the town, um, so that we know to move forward with the contract and go from there.
Okay.
Welcome.
I think it's great.
Excellent.
Thank you for considering these fish kill.
Thank you very much, and if you have other questions, please don't hesitate, reach out to the, to the planning office, they'll, they'll assist you, and if you need to come back with another sketch plan or other questions, you're more than welcome.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
So that was the last item on our agenda tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
I'm not asking for any opposed, I'm going with the aye.